After six o'clock on the second of March, we have on the agenda tonight, I think, just the discussion on municipal regulation of marijuana business. And we have a couple of attorneys here from Drummond-Woodsom to hopefully bring us up to speed. But before that, I think we would, as usual, start with the informational exchange.
Um, yes, you don't really have an agenda because it's a workshop, but informational exchange. First thing is, thank you to the members that participated in the Downtown Vision Design Week. We had some good attendance and we saw some of you in there. I will spam you with information via email at some point, but save the date of Saturday, April 9th. I believe it's 11 to 2:00, we're gonna have an open house at Town Hall where they're gonna roll out, it's gonna be an in-person event, it's a big day, we're gonna try to do it outside, but they're gonna roll out the first draft of the vision plan or some components of it, and then we're gonna try to do some fun community engagement and community activities. So, save the date, April 9th. I'll send you more information as we get closer.
Excellent. Any other information to exchange? The, I think, do you have one, one thing that we want to acknowledge publicly, which is the, the absence of our longtime board member Greg Savona, who passed away a few weeks ago, and his loss is felt here tonight. I think we have probably all been missing him in different ways over the last few weeks, but tonight is the first meeting where he's not here. So, he will be in our thoughts, and we are very grateful for the, many years, I think, of service, right? That he's, I mean, he was on the board for a very long time.
Yeah, he's just, kind of, for another term.
Yeah, so we're, we're definitely keeping his family and friends. I think hopefully we can count ourselves among them in mind, so, yeah, I'll put that out there.
Second that.
Well said. Yeah, he'll be missed.
And then, on a totally different note, I also want to acknowledge Erin's many years of service, and the fact that I think, do I have this right, that tonight is, is your last?
Could be, Sam.
Yes, okay.
What, really?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna defend Erin, that I believe it's been nine years that he has been serving on the planning board.
Yeah.
Nine years of planning for the town of Freeport.
Oh, man, you'll be missed, geez.
Termined out.
Termined out, yeah. Well, we, we very much appreciate the, the wealth of historical institutional knowledge that you have brought to, to the board.
I'll be tuning in from the other side.
I was just gonna say, of course you're gonna join us for every meeting, and...
I think, you know, with Erin being done at least one question, and I'm gonna look at Robert, but who's gonna make all the motions?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I guess, sure. I volunteer.
The only...
Erin, you master that on the fly.
Just an example of everybody's replaceable.
It's, yeah, well, that's why I sit in this seat here, right, so I don't have to do motions.
So, how many opening, uh...
Um, so the appointments committee met today, I don't know what happened at that meeting, but you'll have a vacancy due to the unexpected sad loss of Greg, and then for Erin terming out. So, you'll probably have two new members sitting with you next month.
Oh, good, so there were people that were willing to...
There were, yeah, actually, I was surprised, there was actually quite a few people that were interested in planning boards, so, you know, we're always taking applications.
We have...
Erin, there's so many boards, if you wanna try something else, feel free to submit one, we're taking them on a rolling, rolling basis, all sorts of things, so...
So noted.
Somehow, I feel like you're not gonna drop it off tomorrow. Most people don't, they wanna break, but when you change your mind...
I think we can thank our friends at, I don't even remember the developer's name, for all the interest in the planning board.
Yes.
K M, K, yeah, K.
Yep, something like that.
Anyway.
So, in other exciting news, we do have your guest here tonight, Amy Chow, is our town attorney in Greedy, Greedy, what's your last name? Burns, Burns, doesn't say Burns, from Drummond-Woodsom, they're here to workshop you through cannabis. We do have Anna Child, a board member, virtually on Zoom, and you do have some members of the public tuning in tonight.
Excellent, all right, without further ado.
Okay, so, you tell us when you're ready and we'll get that up, are you ready for that now?
Would you mind if I took my mask off for when I'm leaving?
No, we just wanna ask that you wear a wireless mic, they're, mic, they're over here. All the board members, just make sure you leave your microphones on, because this is how they're getting your sound tonight. We... And Cecilia's gonna run the computer for us, I'll show you the... Have you guys met Cecilia? In person, our assistant planner? James, you might have only seen her on Zoom.
Uh, I, no, I think, I think last time, yeah, last time, we...
Oh, the workshop, yeah, right, right.
Yep.
Is it a good place to stand?
That seems good, yeah.
This will be very informal. Hi, my name is Amy Chow, I'm the town attorney, and my colleague Brady Burns and I are here to, workshop is a verb, I guess, when you're in town government, so, we're gonna workshop with you on the issue of marijuana regulation by municipalities. I understand that there is an initiative to have the planning board make some lay-in use standard recommendations, and we've assisted a number of municipalities in drafting their ordinances, and thought that, Caroline thought it would be a, a good idea to have a workshop at a pretty high level, but we can drill down as much as you'd like with questions, and if we don't know the answers, we'll promise to get back to you with answers. So, without further ado, the way we'll do this, and please feel free to interrupt with questions, Greedy and I will tag-team on the basic topics, and, and what we're gonna do is start with just a, a quick overview of marijuana legalization at the national and regional level, and then we'll get right into the main laws, with a little bit of, you know, kind of history of where the main medical law first started and how that program works, where the adult use law, which is the one that, of course, was passed in 2016, and resulted in quite a bit of heavy concentration and regulation by the Office of Marijuana Policy, OMP, and, and to the, to the programs that we have now under those two laws. And with that, we'll, after we describe those two programs and what the law says about them at a pretty high level, we'll get into some of the municipal considerations that we've seen our towns kind of grapple with, in terms of the kinds of regulation that you, that you might want to impose or, or put in place. And it's my understanding, because this is a high-level view, it's my understanding that you are not at this time, the town is not at this time, considering opting into retail stores and dispensaries, and that your focus primarily, correct me if I'm wrong, Caroline, is on cultivation and manufacturing. And, and so that, we'll do, we'll talk about, briefly talk about all the different uses, but I think it sounds like perhaps the board will wanna kind of roll up your sleeves and talk about the cultivation and manufacturing pieces a little bit more carefully. All right, so, without further ado, can we move forward one more slide? Just gives you a sense of where we've been nationally with marijuana legalization and where we are today. Fully, almost all of our states, 48 states in the Union, have legalized some form of marijuana at this point, as of the beginning of this year, with 17 states that have an adult use program. That's really grown, really, in the past few years. Thirty-seven states have medical programs, and 11 states have kind of the CBD, lower-level THC permitted states. And two states, Nebraska and Idaho, are, are fully illegal. Next slide? Uh, if we go back, I thought this was, I think you have a color copy of this, I thought this was kind of fun to look at, sort of geographically, how that's depicted, and what we see for, the darkest green is, is full adult and medical use, and then you see the lighter green is medical, low THC/CBD is in yellow, and no legal use are the two states in Nebraska. And Alaska is fully legalized as well. Okay. And just New England at a glance, just in terms of interesting statistics. Maine, Massachusetts, Vermont, Connecticut, all have adult use programs. New Hampshire and Rhode Island do not have adult use programs, I think New Hampshire is, is toying with the idea of getting into adult use, and Vermont's adult use program is about to, to begin this year. So, certainly in New England, there's, is a robust adult use and medical marijuana program that most states have, have, have gotten into. All right, so, without further ado, I'm gonna turn this over to Greedy and just, again, remind folks that, that when we go through the medical marijuana discussion, that we're not really talking about retail stores, but that is, that is, it can be a hot topic in municipal regulation, but we'll just touch on it briefly.
Yeah, the goal of this section is really just to give an overview of kind of what the state legal regime is. We're gonna kind of get continually smaller and smaller and more focused as we go through the presentation, so, if you can go next slide. So, a brief overview of the history, which might be familiar to some of you, so, the 1999 is when Maine first legalized medical marijuana, so, that's 22 years ago now. And then, the current system that we have, though, with kind of the caregiver dispensary split, happened in 2009. 2018 is when the current marijuana program rules were adopted, and actually, just, was that this week, or I guess the end of last, yeah, Monday, right? The Office of Marijuana Policy has decided to discontinue attempts at amending medical program rules, and they're deferring to legislation in 2023. So, some of this regulatory framework is a bit of a moving target, this is obviously, even though the medical program has been in place in some way for a couple of decades now, this is a very rapidly evolving piece of, a very rapid, a very rapidly evolving policy space, both at the state and the national level. Next slide. So, here, we should have a quick overview of that, that dispensary caregiver distinction. So, one thing to note here, and as, as was mentioned, you know, we're not talking about dispensaries here at a policy level, this is really just for explanatory purposes, so, dispensary, it's, it's an opt-in program for municipalities, they have to affirmatively opt in, so if your ordinance is silent on it, dispensaries are not allowed in your town. It used to be there was a cap on the number of dispensaries that were allowed within the state, I believe it was eight, that cap was recently lifted to an unlimited amount. So, across the state, we are seeing more dispensaries, as more towns are deciding to opt in or grappling with the question of whether to opt in. One thing to know about dispensaries, and we're gonna talk about this idea of plant canopy more as we go through this presentation, because it's important from a land use perspective when we talk about plant canopy. What we're talking about is, and we have some photos of, of the, kind of what some of these facilities look like, but plant canopy refers to mature plant canopy. In general, a good rule to go by is that approximately one-half to one-third of the floor space of a growing facility will be dedicated to mature plant canopies. So, when we talk about, and that's kind of the, the state, the state regulations, though, refer to this idea of mature plant canopy. So, we use plant canopy as a shorthand, we're talking about mature plants, that's plants that are ready for harvest, but you also have plants, immature plants, seedlings, in various stages of growth that are not covered by some of the square footage requirements. But, so, for dispensaries, though, unlike every other regulated space in either medicinal or adult use, there's no, there's no plant canopy limit for dispensary growth space. So, that sets it apart, and it's a, a big consideration that towns have when they discuss opt-in. But caregivers, however, are individuals or entities that have a single owner. Registered caregivers across the state are limited to 500 square feet of flowering canopy or 30 plants. So, the thing to know about caregivers, and we're gonna talk about this more when we get into some of the nuts and bolts land use things, caregivers are not, you cannot flatly prohibit caregivers anywhere in Maine, so, but they can be regulated in the land use space. So, a distinction that we see a lot in towns is this distinction between home business caregivers, people who are essentially, you know, have a few plants in their, in their residential home, as opposed to more robust commercial operations that are non-residential in nature, kind of a second space. But in any event, any individual caregiver, whether they are in their own home or somewhere else, are limited to 500 square feet of, of plant canopy.
Can I just add that there is a, there is a rule in the state law that allows two caregivers from the same family, who live in the same place, to have, to combine into one facility. So, that you might have a situation where, instead of 500 square feet, you would be at 1,000 or, or 60 flowering plants.
And, and so, this will make more sense as we talk more about the adult use regime, but one thing that we should note here, though, with both dispensaries and caregivers, unlike on the adult use side, where manufacture, cultivation, and retail are regulated under separate licensing programs, for the medical side, vertical integration is generally allowed in these businesses. So, a caregiver, you know, a registered caregiver will generally be able to cultivate, manufacture, and sell under the scope of their, of their single license. So, we're gonna be talking in a bit about regulating cultivation and, and manufacture and processing. In that space, there's a way that larger operations outside of homes for caregivers can be regulated in a very similar way as the adult use program. But in general, though, people who are registered caregivers or dispensaries can be vertically integrated, whereas adult use, there are individual licenses that control whether you can cultivate, manufacture, or have a retail storefront.
Yeah, it's a good rule of thumb, because a lot of questions we get about caregivers are, and sometimes people will say, well, you can't prohibit, you can't regulate caregivers, you know, we're allowed to be here as of right. And as Greedy said, that's not, that's not exactly correct. We, we, you can't have a town that prohibits caregivers wholesale, but as, as we'll get to, there are some ways in which you can impose land use standards that would regulate the size and scope of a care, what we call a caregivership cultivation facility now. In the early days of, of this regulation, a caregiver could have a maximum of five patients, and I don't know if you remember that, but there was the rotating fifth patient loophole that a lot of caregivers were using, to say, you know, that they would have more, they would only have five patients at one given minute. So, that didn't seem to be very authentic, and as a result, the regulations changed, and now there's an unlimited number of patients that can be served by caregivers as well. The regulations are very clear that caregivers who grow according to these limits can wholesale all of their product if they want to. So, those, those two changes by themselves in the law are what kind of changed how a caregivership can be really seen as a commercial use, as opposed to what we think of, like, in your basement, in your barn, in your home, being, you know, a small-scale medical caregiver.
And, and Amy said it, but to put a fine point on it, you know, the, the key here is that caregivers cannot be flatly prohibited, but they can be regulated within your locality. Next slide. So, and this is, this is just a, we're trying to break out the terms here that, that we're gonna be using throughout the rest of this presentation. Again, for the medical space, we, there is vertical integration, so when we talk about these facilities, we could be talking about the same place, or the same, the same location. But when we talk about dispensary or caregiver retail stores, what we're talking about is the final point of sale, what you would imagine as your storefront, where you're facing, you know, end users of, of your product. So, and that's generally retail and not wholesale. For cultivation facilities, we're really talking about the, the state, all of the stages of growing the cannabis plant from, from seedling to mature plant, as well as all of the harvesting, cutting, drying, and packaging of the marijuana product. So, all of the, the dry flower that is then sold for retail or wholesale, all of that is covered within the cultivation space. When we talk about manufacture, on the other hand, what we're talking about is secondary marijuana products, so, things that utilize marijuana as an ingredient, but, you know, have, it's, so, you know, edibles, topicals, concentrates, things that are more than just the, the dry flower itself. So, just to kind of keep our terms, what we're talking about here, you know, cultivation really covers kind of the soup to nuts of the whole growth product. Manufacturing is, is what it sounds like, all of your secondary products.
Okay, so that's the medical program, kind of at a high level, in a nutshell, and the adult use program, we can go to the next slide. I think the sort of history of how marijuana has changed really was marked by the Legalization Act that went into effect in 2016, because as Greedy said, we've had for a couple of decades a medical marijuana program, medical marijuana statutes in Maine that, that bumped along, and it wasn't really until adult use came along, legalization came along, that, you know, there was this wholesale sort of change in how we looked at, at these programs. And I would say the biggest issue that, for municipalities, that it's important to understand, we've been talking about it already, but I think it's an important underscore, is, is the fact that unlike some other statutory schemes, the Legalization Act is written to give municipalities quite a lot of control. And, and so, when Greedy and I are talking about opting in, the presumption in this law, which was, you know, lobbied very aggressively before the legislature, was that municipalities should be able to be dry if they want to, and they should be able to regulate these different use categories that we've been talking about as they see fit. And the, the default is that if a municipality does nothing, then, then they haven't opted into this system to allow any of these uses in your town. And so, essentially, you could argue, but for what medical caregivers can do, and but for your overarching zoning ordinance, you know, standards, you can prohibit especially these adult use, but also some of these medical categories that we've been talking about in your town. So, now, you are considering, okay, do we want to get into allowing and opting in certain categories of uses, which a number of towns are doing, and I've got, so, so just to, the regul, so, November 2016 is the, the timeframe of the act, and in 2018, there was quite a bit of heavy regulatory work that was done with OMP, and we have the first adult use licenses that were issued by OMP in September of 2020. So, we're still pretty new, but we're, you know, as, as you can see, this is an industry that is taking hold, and you're seeing the actual physical impacts of this as you drive around the state. So, next slide. All right, so here are the types of adult use marijuana businesses. Retail store, there's quite a bit of, you know, discussion about that, that's, that is something that a, a number of towns are either interested in or not, that, that speaks for itself. A cultivation facility, which I'm gonna go into in some detail on the next slide, so that, because I know it's something that, that the board might be interested in. By the way, the product that is grown in a cultivation facility, in an adult use facility versus a medical, you know, caregiver facility, it's the same product, okay? So, there's no, it's not like, there's a different strain of marijuana for medical, different for adult use, it's all, it's all the same product. It's just because we have these two different statutes that have different historical backgrounds that, that we approach things differently. And one of the things to know about the different programs, reg, from a regulatory standpoint, is that the legislature in 2016 and in 2018, when the regulations were promulgated, made the, the state regulation of an adult use facility in each of these use categories very robust, lots of performance standards, lots of state-mandated things that you have to do, well, we have a list of those things, unlike in the medical program. So, what you see is I have very heavy regulated adult use space for these use categories, but it's the same product, right? So, we'll come back to that, because one question might be, well, whether you're operating a medical cultivation facility or an adult use, what can municipalities do to regulate these kinds of performance standards?
Is there chatter from the OMP that they might, if, if the same product, if it's the same thing, that they might just go to the more stricter adult use and just have those regulations kind of impose on everything, and just, just kind of have one...
Well, that's interesting, because I think, I think there has been some talk about that, and I don't know exactly where that debate lies, but I will tell you that there are municipalities who have chosen to do that, and I think you have the authority to do that. So, robust, strict performance standards, adopted at the state level in the adult use program, and there are municipalities that will say, okay, whether you're a medical cultivation facility or an adult use, you still have the same set of standards that we're, and we're gonna borrow from the state performance standards. So, I've seen, seen that happen.
One other question, these businesses here, are these, are these the, the sections where you can, a municipality can choose to opt in?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yes, these are, I should have mentioned that, thank you. These are the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 statutory use categories that are defined in the statute that you can opt into. Nursery wasn't, was one that was added a bit, a bit later. Testing facility, I know that's not really something that the town is considering, and then manufacturing, as Greedy has already talked about, it's, again, I don't think the manufacturing process is really, you know, any different between medical and adult use, though.
Amy, I just wanna clarify one thing for the board.
Sure.
Looking over the directive from the council, it was for the planning board to look at cannabis cultivation and manufacturing and processing uses. They didn't necessarily say whether or not you had to make the distinguishing...
Between the two.
Between the two, so just keep that in mind, as they're going through the two, there was no directive that came in on that.
And what were the, what were the ones, just so I, the, the opt-in ones were...
So, that the Freeport Town Council directs the planning board to develop land use standards as the planning board deems appropriate, to allow both cannabis cultivation and cannabis manufacturing and processing uses within Freeport. Said regulations to include the determination of appropriate zoning districts, the development of any recommended performance standards, and the development of any other relevant land use regulations that the planning board deems necessary.
So, that would be, would that be 2, 3, and...
That would be 2...
Really, 2 and 5.
Yeah, 2 and 5.
2 and 5, okay.
So, processing isn't really a legal term of art in, in the regulatory space. Like I said, the, the cultivation regime really covers that whole stage of what we would think of as processing the marijuana plant. And then manufacturer, again, covers everything that we think of as adulterating that primary product, so...
Making pictures, things like that.
Got it, okay.
And Greedy, you say you said you feel like that directive covers 2 and 5, how is, why would you say it doesn't include 3, just because it's the immature plants and the seeds?
Yeah.
Rather than the plants themselves?
It is a separate categorization, and it, there are some different, you know, land use impacts potentially for, from a nursery, but, I mean, it is, that's something that, that, that the, that the board is interested in, or the council is interested in looking into. It tends to be not, not as popular as...
Right, and the thing, and the thing to keep in mind with nurseries is that we're talking about only the sale of immature plants to other licensees, so it's, it's a more narrow category of cultivation. My understanding is that the, the, you know, the, the way that those facilities function is similar, but we're not talking about mature plants at that point.
Erin, did you have a question?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, it just seems, I, I overheard some of those discussions, and it seems like the political will was not to have retail storefronts in our downtown selling marijuana, and so, to me, 2 through 5 would be things for us to explore in our land use ordinances, because I don't see a significant difference between a nursery and a cultivation facility, and a testing facility seems like it's in the same spirit. So, I wouldn't discount any of 2 through 5, that's my only point.
And I, I will say, with the testing facilities, there are very few in the state. The, they're very, very, very highly regulated at the state level. So, there, it's much less likely that you have people beating down your door to put up a, a testing facility.
That's good to know.
All right, next slide, are we, any other questions? Please, keep them coming.
I'm just curious, is there, is there an organic label associated with marijuana?
An organic label?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of, per se.
So, the, the, the manufacturing facilities are subjected to food and beverage standards, just like any other food processing facility. But, as far as I know, especially, you know, certainly nothing in the, you know, the federal designation context, given its status at the federal level, but.
Go in, there's your.
Okay, so.
Off guard.
So, on the adult use side, with cultivation, again, we're talking about growing the same product, but in regulating adult use cultivation, the Legalization Act and the regulations around them have specified four tiers of grow. And you've probably heard of that tier 1, 2, 3, and 4. This is where, you know, Grady's point comes in, for you to think about, what are the land use impacts of the various tiers? And what I will say is, not only can you opt into a use category, I think, and some towns have done this, they've opted in to a, a tier limitation, if you will. If you don't want the larger tiers, you only want tiers 1 and 2, or you just want tier 1, or tiers 1, 2, and 3. You have, under home rule authority and under the act, quite a bit of leeway to do that. So, in just conceiving of how big these things are, as Grady pointed out, if you're using a third to a half of the space is taken up by plant canopy, let's take a tier 2 of 2,000, right? You might be looking at 6,000. Do I have the math on that?
4 to 6,000.
Yeah, 4 to 6,000 feet, square feet of area that you would need to allow you to have that amount of mature flowering canopy. So, hallways, immature plants, we'll, we'll have some slides about what processing looks like in a cultivation facility, so you can see, it's, it's, it's very, the rooms are very pristine, they're very, very clean. So, tier 1 is the same as what a, what a medical caregiver cultivator, or a medical caregiver, caregivership, cultivation caregivership, it's the, it's the same standard. 30 mature plants or 500 square feet of plant canopy, and their tier 2 is 2,000 square feet, tier 3 is 7,000, and tier 4 is 20,000. And just to underscore that cultivation facilities may not sell products directly to consumers, again, without a separate license for a store. And they, but they may wholesale, and they may sell to other facilities that actually may, like marijuana stores or other cultivation facilities. So, that's cultivation facilities. Okay, next slide. Grady, I think that's you.
Yeah. So, manufacturing facilities, you know, we've talked about the definition quite a bit, but the, what we're talking about here are the primary state regulations that really hit with manufacturing facilities specifically. In the next couple of slides, we're going to talk about state standards that are applicable to both cultivation facilities and manufacturing facilities. But, just in general, manufacturing facilities under state law can't design products likely to appeal to people under the age of 21. That includes things like animal designs on their products, things like that. Those are all state regulations that would apply regardless of the local regulation. They're not allowed to infuse marijuana into commercially available non-marijuana end product, so you can't just throw it into a random soda beverage that, you know, you do, or whatever, you know, you, it, it can't be adulterated into something that could be mistaken for a non-marijuana product, is really what they're trying to get at there. And they can't manufacture products not containing marijuana. So, they have one job, they go to the [inaudible]. Next slide. So, but here is, is really where we get into the, you know, when we talk about the nuts and bolts of land use regulatory regimes, this is, the next few slides, what we're talking about are the applicable state standards that will apply regardless of local performance standards. So, if Freeport, if Freeport were to opt into manufacturing and cultivation, these standards would apply to any facility of those two categories that was cited within the town. Adult use.
Adult use.
And that's, that's an important point to make, and we'll, we'll talk about it a little bit more as we go, we've been kind of peppering it in. There are ways in which caregiver and medical operations can be regulated under these exact same standards, but it's not automatic in the same way that adult use is. So, your standards have to specifically indicate that you're referring to these types of caregiver facilities. A really common, or at least some, some cities and towns, the way that they've done this is they've kind of parsed out on the medicinal side, home-based caregivers and secondary-site caregivers, and, you know, applied the adult use standards to the caregivers who are functioning in, in the exact same way that an adult use store would function, in terms of what the, you know, it's not a home occupation business. And they, you know, they just adopt by reference these same standards. But, again, it has to be explicit within your ordinance. So, some of the highlights here, so, lighting needs to be at any gate or perimeter entry point, high-security locks on all of the perimeter doors, and limited access areas inside of any facility. Window, all windows must be lockable. All of these facilities need to have alarm systems that are monitored by a third-party security service. So, the alarm has to actually go somewhere, and it has to be, the alarm also has to be able to be turned off or disabled by an off-site security facility. Video must, so, not only is the state law required that the inside and outside of every exit or entryway is covered by video, I think it's 780p is the minimum quality standard in the state statute. The entire cultivation, manufacturer, storage areas, and waste disposal areas need to be completely covered by video surveillance capabilities. So, there needs to be a camera angle that touches every part of the facilities that we're, that we're talking about in these areas. In, in places where outdoor growing is permitted in cultivation, 10 feet outside of any gate or exterior fence needs to be camered as well. Next slide. Again, so, outdoor cultivation is its own subset of cultivation. There are specific state standards that apply to outdoor cultivation. Fencing must be at least 6 feet tall, obscure the entire cultivation area from view. Lighting must illuminate 10 feet around the perimeter of the establishment. And these, these last two are included as may's but not musts in the state standards, they're recommendations. Employee theft measures and security guards. So, those last two are not requirements under the state regime. But, but again, when we're talking about opting in, these are the regulations that will be carried in automatically with the adult use program.
Grady, question for you on the lighting. We have pretty strict lighting standards in Freeport. Does the state go as far as to give illuminance levels, or is it just say, is that pretty much where they leave it?
So, I do not believe, and I looked at the state regulations as well, I do not believe that they have a lumens standard. What I saw was, the standard was around this idea of, you know, 10 feet of illuminated space. I mean, you could figure out what that would be in terms of lumens, but, and I can double-check that, but I don't believe that they break it down to lumens.
Yeah, we have strict foot candle limitations, especially as you get near the property line, so that's kind of why I was asking the.
But that.
And you can be stricter.
Yeah.
And more specific in your lighting standards.
Yeah, just in the existing lighting standards.
Right.
Freeport probably says it can't be brighter than a certain.
Yeah, we have like, down to the dust ball, so.
Yeah, so they may be kind of.
Oh, exactly. That's why I was asking, as you're saying.
Freeport may say your, your light can only be this bright, and state may want to say, it needs to be brighter than that.
Yeah, and our standards are pretty limiting, so if you had to illuminate 10 feet around, that would essentially create a bigger ballpark.
So, one, one thing I will say is that those standards only apply when you're talking about outdoor cultivation, which, again, is something that you could prohibit. It's something that isn't, isn't necessarily applicable. So, so that, yeah, there are ways, there are ways to tailor this, to get around those. But it's also something to consider as we're talking, as we move on in this conversation about, you know, potential optimal zoning locations, district locations, you know, if you do have, you know, if you're looking at these standards, if, you know, thinking about, well, what standards do we already have in place that are relevant to these zones? Does it make sense to place these in this area? So, something to keep in the back of the mind. And finally here, so, pardon the pun, joint adult use and medical cultivation and manufacture. So, the state, state law does actually contemplate a joint caregiver, adult use facility. There are very specific state law requirements that would apply for these facilities. They have to be completely segregated from one another within the premises. So, the, the plants themselves must be very aggressively separated from one another. I believe it's separate rooms. They can't come in contact with each other in any way. There are very specific tracking and record-keeping requirements. And also, the, so, if you had, say, a caregiver who wanted to get into the adult use space, they would have to be separately licensed as adult use cultivators and meet all of those state standards.
So, each half of the building would have to adhere to different standards?
So, right, so, potentially, yeah. So, but the key is that they need to be legal under both. So, it's certainly possible, you do see these, but especially with the market prices of the two products, because of the testing regimes being much higher at the, at the adult use side, you will see, you know, kind of these joint operations of, you know, well, do you have a medical card, do you not have a medical card? But, that's just kind of a, it is contemplated within the state regulations, though, that you can have these kind of combined facilities.
Okay. Municipal considerations. So, a lot of this is review, we've already talked about it, but dispensaries, which I know you're not really considering, do require a municipal opt-in, along with all the other use categories. And, and we already talked about registered caregivers as well, that we cannot do an outright ban on caregiver activities, but you can regulate them through zoning limitations.
Such as.
And you can also, as Grady mentioned, completely prohibit outdoor cultivation facilities in town. And then, there is, there is a grandfathering issue, or a non, legally non-conforming use issue, there is a grandfathering provision in the statute that does say that caregivers may be able to continue activities if the operation started as a legally non-conforming use. And that can be a sort of fact-driven exercise as to whether they can stay in a location. So, if you decide that you want to use zoning as one of your tools for how to regulate in, not only by use category, but by district, you may need to consider the history of ongoing operations that were, that were involved in the medical caregiver space. All right, next slide. It's too bad we can't see this better, and you may be able to see this on your own, but I thought this was kind of an interesting slide, about which, which towns and cities in the state have opted in.
I, I was just looking, I'm surprised Brunswick.
I know.
Is just across the board opted in.
Yeah. Brunswick has opted in for, for a while now, I haven't known that. But I, I kind of wish we had provided you the full alphabet. But, there are quite a number, 80, over 80 municipalities at this point have, have done some form of opt-in. We've helped a number of communities opt in, and from the very basic, we only want one thing, to the whole nine yards. Okay, next slide. We've already talked about broad home rule authority and, and the, the authority that you have to regulate in the space in a lot of different ways, and we can break that down as we, as we continue. But, let's, let's do a couple of, talk about some ways in which you can adopt land use regulations that, that regulate in these areas. Limiting the number and type of marijuana establishment that may be authorized. I just want to say a little bit, we've already talked about type, and that's an easy one to sort of get your hands around, your arms wrapped around. Number is, I have seen a number of, I've seen a number of situations where municipalities have regulated using a cap or a priority licensing period. Sometimes they'll, they'll impose a number within a particular district, you know, will allow town-wide, unregulated, with respect to number of licenses, but within this district, like the downtown district, will only allow a cap. And I'll just say one thing about that. It is, it can be an effective land use tool, but, but I would just say, as your town attorney, my observation of capped programs in municipalities, sometimes that can lead to litigation. Because you have to have robust procedures of who gets to fill out an application first, and is it first in, and, so, there can be a lot of issues related to lotteries and things like that. So, what I would just say as an overarching point is that if you are seriously considering a cap, I think you have to think about whether it's really necessary as a land use tool to achieve your ends, or whether there might be some other tools that you could use. It wouldn't be my first pick.
And. That makes, that's good to know, that makes sense.
Yeah. They're, they can be powerful but not elegant in a lot of instances. They have to be very, you have to be very precise within your ordinances. And one, just from a policy or kind of a practical perspective, the competition for storefronts is generally much more fierce than it is for back-end wholesale cultivation and, and manufacturer facilities. Not all the time. I mean, certainly, you know, they're all, they all, they can all be very profitable for the people who go into those ventures, but I think the, across the state, the most, it gets, it gets more fierce in terms of competition, the more you, the more you open up to the retail space.
And there may be some individual community, I don't want to suggest that you cannot use, you know, limitation on number as, as a tool, because there are some communities based on individualized needs where that really makes sense. So, just want to think carefully about it before you do this.
Any question on the cap? So, if, you know, the guidance for, you know, caps can be complicated, some tools that the planning boards use more recently, in other cases are separation between uses of the same type.
Yes, exactly.
Lot sizes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, Grady will get into that a little bit, and actually, it's, it's on this slide as well, but the idea of sensitive use buffers, the idea of distance between similar facilities, those, we have seen those used effectively as well as a, as a land use tool.
What you guys did for solar.
I think it just makes a little more sense to me personally.
That's right, you did do that recently with respect to solar, right?
Yeah.
So, okay, next slide. Okay, I think.
Yeah. So, this next section here is really just kind of a very, very broad overview of some of the considerations that, kind of based on all, everything we've just talked about, when we're in the land use and ordinance writing space, some of, some of the tools that we can think about in terms of how are we going to tailor this to the specific needs of the town, and ensure that all the competing interests that we always have to worry about with land use are being respected. So, the, the broadest and most powerful is, you know, limiting uses to certain zones. So, you know, Freeport has zoning, it has zoning districts, it has allowed and not allowed uses within those districts. You know, as, as an initial question, determining, you know, where and what zones would be the most compatible with these kind of, especially if we're talking about manufacturing and cultivation, you know, commercial quasi-industrial uses. And determining, you know, which, which zones would kind of slot into those, those categories. The other, the other very broad piece of regulation that you can consider is regulating by license type, which is exactly what we've been talking about here, and it sounds like was part of kind of the, the charge that you were given, was really looking at these cultivation and manufacturing facilities specifically, but being very specific about the types of uses that you're opting into. So, as we get, but once you get in, kind of zooming in from those very broad areas of regulation, there are other tools that we can use to more fully tailor where these should be located. be located. Sensitive use buffers are incredibly common across the state of Maine when we talk about the opt-in space. There is, so, though, under state law, there is a required buffer from schools. The state law default is a 1,000-foot buffer, so if the town does not, if the town is silent on the question, all of these uses must be located 1,000 feet away from any school. The town can choose to reduce that buffer to no less than 500 feet. So state law requires at least 500 feet of buffering from any school. But that's the only buffer that's included in the state regulatory framework. So, but under home rule, the town has the authority to impose other buffers around other types of uses based on your own local considerations. So one thing that we see often, buffering from residential homes, from certain designated parks, if they're contained within your zoning ordinance. One thing that we do see in some places is, there's been a question of, you know, daycares, daycare facilities. This kind of dovetails into my next point here, when we talk about the considerations for buffering. One thing that you need to be cognizant of when you're drafting these kind of buffering pieces of language is, the definitions are very, very important, both to put an applicant on notice about where they can locate their facilities. So for example, licensed daycare facilities are, can be somewhat transient within a town, and also much more difficult to identify than a school, you know, in an actual, you know, educational establishment. So, you know, from, on the applicant's side, or on the enforcement and permitting side, you really want to think about what data does the town have access to at the code enforcement level, and also, you know, if these things are already, you know, if they require a permit from the town, if it's something that you can easily track and cite, that's something that you really want to keep in mind when you're talking about these buffers. Some towns who have the resources to do it, or the time, utilize GIS to assist in this, so they'll actually pick out and show as one of their GIS layers parcels that, where certain marijuana uses are allowed. I think Auburn is one of the cities that does that. But it's, if you have an existing GIS program, it's something that is possible to do, that can be helpful on both the town side as well as on an applicant's side.
Does this apply to just stores, or to all the production aspects of marijuana?
Yeah, so any of these can be, so it applies to any of them. So if you opt into a certain category of use, any of these tools can be applied to any of those uses. And they don't have to be the same for, between uses either. So in a hypothetical world where a town opted into both retail and cultivation, they could impose different buffering requirements as between those uses. There is an incredible amount of flexibility that towns have under home rule, and the state, unlike some other parts of, alcohol is one that comes to mind, that's heavily regulated by the state, a lot of alcohol regulations are preempted by state statute. It's the opposite in the marijuana space. The state has been emphatic that their, that home rule is very much preserved for towns when they're regulating under their land use.
But even for cultivation, it's no less than 500 feet from a school?
Yes, so, yeah, so for any, under state law, for any adult use, the school buffering will apply, regardless of whether or not there's a local state.
So the default would be 1,000 feet, but you could, by regulation, by your own ordinance, go down to as low as 500?
You'd have to affirmatively say that.
Does this, I'm sorry, I feel like you conflicted. Does this apply to the medical, the caregivers as well?
So, so the state, the school buffer does not.
Okay.
So, and that's, so again, when we're talking about how towns can regulate the medical space, you know, you can integrate these same standards into your, the medical side, as long as you're not prohibiting caregivers from conducting their business within your town.
So, or just for example, so as Grady was talking about, the secondary medical caregivership cultivation, right, which cannot be larger than what the adult use cultivation facility calls tier one, right? So if you're that big and you're doing medical, you could apply these same buffers. They don't apply by state law, but under home rule, you could apply the same buffer to a cultivation facility of the tier one adult use size, but it doesn't matter whether they're medical or adult use, if that makes sense.
It does, and I have two other questions on that. Do you know if the state law specifies it's from the school property, or is it from the building? And second, I'm like, wow, we have a lot of schools in Freeport, we have a lot of public schools, a lot of private schools, a lot of nursery schools, and we have a couple of outdoor recreation schools. Is, I'm thinking there's going to be circles everywhere, so.
Property boundary, I think, Carolyn.
Does the state get that specific as types of schools?
They do. And I, we don't have the specific state definition on here, but it's rolled up into the definition of educational institution, I believe. So it's, I think it borrows from one of the other titles in state statute, but it, you know, it is what you would think of as a school, whether private or public. But we're talking generally pre-K through 12.
And it is, it is property boundary.
So it doesn't apply to preschool, like licensed daycare?
So licensed daycares would be a separate category, but it, and I can, I'd be happy to circulate the definition if there is a question about it.
We could always choose to, you know, as a board, right? To just.
Yeah, I'm just curious about like.
Yeah, you could.
So, I mean, this may be too granular for now, but what, so like, if you had a, say, a tier three cultivation facility, and a school opens 700 feet away.
Right. So that would be, so it would be within the buffer, it would be a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming use.
Yeah.
So that, you know, it gets swept up in all of your non-conformance language, but that's how that would, that's how that would work.
Yeah, we'll get some clarification on that, because I do feel like that could definitely be a limiting factor.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, you know, like, there was that little school down on Wolf's Neck Road that was there, and then it wasn't, and then there's.
Yeah, that's interesting.
And on the corner, you know, by 125 there, there's a house, it's like an outdoor educational.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't even thinking of that one, yeah.
But, I mean, there's kids around there all the time.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's what they were saying, too, like, a lot of those, you know, home businesses or home daycares, home occupations don't need to register, so a lot of the home-based daycare, some of them can really.
How would you know?
Lie under the radar, which is kind of what he was getting to, so I think.
It can create a lot of ambiguity on both the enforcement side, you know, especially, you know, if there's, if there's no record of this home business being there, but it is there, and someone cites there, not knowing, the town doesn't know, you know, that person is then in violation, it just creates enforcement problems.
Well, it really would be nice to utilize GIS, though, because then you can just identify all these improvements, and then just buffer them by 1,000 feet, and then your residual areas where you could go.
Well, yeah, that's why I was asking, because that's a pretty, I think, simple step one, if we can clarify the definition.
Yeah.
You know, pop that on the maps, that's pretty easy for us to do.
Yeah.
The regulation says that you cannot cite an adult use establishment within 1,000 feet of the property line of a pre-existing public or private school, and then it goes on to say, but you can go down to no less than 500 feet.
So it's the property lines.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, and we can, we are getting too granular. You don't need me to read the statute. There are, there are actually statute-level definitions of public and private school that the statute refers to, but as Grady mentioned, you can regulate beyond those.
And certainly GIS is also a useful tool, as even in the planning process itself, as you're thinking about, you know, optimal ordinance framing, you know, what would be the effect of this? It could be a very useful tool for that as well.
I mean, potentially, it could knock out a lot of the downtown, the way our school, the our public schools are situated here, every couple streets.
Which, I mean, might be just, just fine.
Right, so then, I mean, yeah, so then you overlay that with, you know, a district standard on top of that, and, you know, you can, you can really, really finely tune where you're allowing these businesses to locate. So finally, getting down to the very, very minute, some specific performance standards that are common in localities that regulate, I'm going to emphasize odor here, just because under the state, the state statute and regulations really don't deal with odor control at all in any meaningful way. So when we talk about, you know, supplementing the state regulations with common kind of nuisance-based concerns that we, that we deal with a lot in the land use space, specific odor, performance standards around odor are common. The rest are things that you would find for a lot of conditional uses, traffic, you know, additional security standards, if the town wants to be more strict than the state standards, they're free to do that, hours of operation, signage, as well as byproduct and waste disposal. There are state standards around byproduct and waste disposal that we didn't really get into, but certainly the town is free to regulate in that space as well.
And noise, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead. The odor, I'm, how, how do you measure that and enforce something like that? I mean, is that?
Yeah, so they have chemical sniffers, essentially. You can, you can actually, like.
The technology on this is getting really much better.
Wow.
And I don't know a ton about odor, but I was told that Bitterford actually has a very good standard on odor. And some of the odor regulations I've seen are tough, because it's like, it can be so subjective.
Yeah.
Training a particular dog.
But they do have technology now that can.
That's crazy, yeah.
Yeah, so, and you're free to impose a subjective or an objective standard. It has to be, you know, rational and not arbitrary, but there's a lot of, yeah, Bitterford doesn't. Yeah, certainly, this is not meant to be exhaustive, and, you know, local, you know, facts of the ground will dictate a lot of, you know, what, what these performance standards should look like. This is really just to kind of get the conversation started about what other towns have implemented to kind of, you know, just kind of get you in the space of, you know, where, what does this regulation look like across the state?
All right, next slide. So these next few slides are about licensure. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because, but I just wanted to mention this, because, so up to now, we've been talking about your land use, your zoning ordinances, land use standards, I think, was the charge, to come up with recommendations for performance standards. And of course, there is the overarching state licensing requirement through OMP. And, you know, the thing to remember about licensing is that you have to go get your conditional state license first, before you can get your local authorization with the town, and that's by state regulation. So regardless of whether a town imposes its own licensing scheme for marijuana businesses, which it can do, there is a state licensing requirement. And so you need to, before you even, let's say you didn't have your own licensing program, but you had land use standards alone, you would still need a license from the state, a conditional state license, before you would get what's called a municipal authorization. And so most folks who are going to come to you know that they need to have all that in place, and there's sort of this concept of getting conditional state licensure before you even arrive on the doorstep of the town to go through the local authorization process, which might not be a licensing process. It might be a, how do we navigate where we can be from a land use standpoint, and what are the performance standards, and are we going to go before the PRB or some other body to go through site plan review, depending on what we want to do? So, and I know we're not really going to be talking about a local licensing program, you know, here, but it's similar to, if you think about a restaurant, right, you know, as a land use, it's allowed in a particular zone, usually as a conditional use with site plan approval. But apart from that land use authorization, you have a liquor license that you need to be able to serve, and you need to renew that every year. And that's run primarily by the state. Under, under the marijuana program, locals can regulate and have licensing programs on top of these land use standards. And we've seen everything from, we've helped towns that don't have zoning, and so they just have a licensing program, a business license program, and we've had others who will have an integrated both zoning and licensing, and then we can, we also see just the sort of zoning, licensing, land use standard approach. So that's really all I wanted to say about licensure. We get to the fun slides now. I don't know if fun is really the right, keep going. Keep going till it looks fun. So.
What does it look like?
Well, and this is, I have to say, one of my colleagues who, our colleagues who does a lot in the marijuana industry knows what this process looks like, and I don't, go ahead. But this is, when I said it, this looks somewhat antiseptic, this is a clone room, and.
What is this, a what room?
A clone room, and I wish I could tell you more about what goes on there, but.
I think it has to do with the propagation of seedlings.
I think it does, yeah.
I mean, there's significant infrastructure investment in these.
HVAC, you know, ventilation, lighting.
And, you know, you don't want mold growing on these things, and so, I mean, people will come in and they're like fully tived, and.
Laboratory, yeah.
Very elaborate, okay, go ahead. So this is a, you know, one of the earlier stages of a grow room. These are obviously not the mature plants, these are growing. And then this is, these are the flowering plants. So you'll, you'll obviously have differing areas, you know, of stages of growth.
And this, this also, so plants ready for harvest, this kind of gets, again, to what we're talking about, though, in terms of, when we're talking about mature plant canopies, you know, the things that we were just, the previous pictures weren't getting swept up in that, we're really talking about mature plants.
So that is where you're talking about when it's like, you can occupy 500 square feet is one-third or one-half, that's what, that's the 500 square feet.
So you'd imagine in a single facility, you have this room, you have a clone room, you know, you have, you know, just for the various stages of propagation.
Yeah.
Drying room, pretty self-explanatory, but. So this is all cultivation. So, so I know the word processing was used, but as Grady was talking about, the processing happens under the umbrella of cultivation. All of these things are happening in a cultivation facility. I want to say a couple things about this. This is a hydrocarbon extractor, so, and this is something I think the town may want to consider. So there is a type of manufacturing, I'm not, I'm not going to get this right, where inherently hazardous substances are used, like butane and hydrocarbons, to pull out the THC stuff that you want. It is very highly flammable, and so from a land use perspective and a safety perspective, it is very highly regulated. These things tend to be in like $2 million, you know, operations, and they are heavily regulated by National Fire Protection Code regulations. And many towns prohibit them for understandable reasons, because, first of all, they're, they're quite expensive, it's a large-scale operation, and they're very dangerous unless, you know, unless they are handled carefully. So I'm not saying that all towns prohibit them, but you, but that's another area that you can regulate and say, nope, this kind of, can't have one of these in the town of Freeport, because it's highly flammable.
So you can, you can allow manufacturing, but disallow manufacturing involving these inherently.
Inherently hazardous substances in their manufacturing process. Because there are a set of regulations that really govern that quite strictly. Grady, you take this slide, this is.
Have one of those, but it's got to be in a reinforced concrete bunker?
You could say that. You could put performance standards around that.
Absolutely. So, yeah, and then, so this is after the manufacturing process, so you have secondary products that may look similar in some instances to existing trademarked non-marijuana goods.
I always thought that looks like an Altoid box. Doesn't that look like Altoids?
That seems like a cease and desist, just waiting to happen.
So this is what you would make in a manufacturing facility, where you're saying, yeah.
So, so these, these are all, right, these are all being developed exclusively in manufacturing facilities. Recall, though, that under the caregiver statute, you have that vertical integration, so in a caregiver facility on the medical side, you can have this, this manufacturing happening under the same business umbrella that is that registered caregiver. happening under the same business umbrella that that is that registered caregiver that's cultivating and selling the end product as well.
However, on the local level, you, I think you can prohibit that, in other words, if you decide not to opt into manufacturing, I think you could, you could, I mean, I think you are considering that, but.
Yeah.
Is there another one? I can't remember if we, no, that's it.
That's it.
So.
Well, that was very enlightening, that was good.
So all of your photos are indoor growing, but there could also be outdoor growing?
Those are all photos from indoor grow, that's correct.
But you could choose to grow outdoor.
Yes, unless the town wishes to prohibit that, and there are specific regulations like lighting and fencing and things that would pertain to an outdoor grow.
Okay, I have just a few questions, if you don't mind. Is there any possible concern for the town or anybody involved, based on the fact that it's a Schedule I controlled substance on the federal level?
Yeah, I'm glad you raised that. So I, there was a slide that I took out of our slide deck, and you were very correct that marijuana is still a Schedule I drug, and it's, you know, a federal federally banned substance, and and I don't know if that is going to change. However, there is a statutory amendment called the Rohrbacher FAR Amendment, I believe, which basically says that the Department of Justice has decided that if a state has legalized marijuana, that they will not, from a federal standpoint, prosecute those cases as long as you are in compliance or strict compliance with the state regulatory model. That's the gist of it. Some states actually adopt that, you have to be in strict compliance, others just say compliance, but in general, there's kind of a hands-off on prosecution approach that the feds have taken by by statute.
Although in the in the previous administration, there were threats to go after.
There were threats, you're right, and that didn't, that didn't happen. And I suspect with with what a lucrative industry this is, that probably won't happen.
Okay.
Anyway.
The the rule about appealing to someone under 21, is that defined, or is that a subjective standard?
There are, there are specific standards in state statute, so the the one that I can recall offhand is that the designs can't feature animals, humans, or other, there's a third category in that, though, but they actually, they actually do lay out, they define in more detail what that is.
Two more questions. What is the logic behind the greater, the greater purity standards for adult use than medical?
I don't know the answer to that.
So, well, some of it is quirks of state history, frankly. The the state medical regime and the adult-use regime were brought into being at two different times by different groups with different concerns, under different administrations. So, you know, in, I think, if if we were to to go back on a blank slate and talk about what's the most, you know, coherent way to regulate cannabis, I don't think most people would choose the kind of two-track system that that we have, but that is, it's, it's a function of of the history of legalization over time.
So it doesn't really make sense.
Yeah, and and on the medical side, I mean, as Grady said, they, I guess they have kind of stopped actively looking at medical regulations, but I suspect that there have been attempts to kind of merge the system, you know, merge the programs.
I wouldn't be surprised if they merge and they'll just.
Eventually.
Adhere to the stricter standards.
It's, they're, it's, you know, these are political processes, and there are a lot of interest groups.
In five, 10 years, will we have a merged system, maybe?
Intuitively, I would think you would be more concerned about the medical marijuana, which is being used to treat somebody who may be, may need it.
Yeah.
And have some kind of specific effect.
Right, right, from a, from a quality standpoint, right, a purity standpoint, you're right.
It's just the opposite.
Absolutely right, yeah.
My last question, just a detail about the caregiver thing, it was, on the slide, you defined it as one owner, but then you said two family members could double the capacity?
Right, there is a, there is a rule in the in the medical statute that allows a medical caregiver, as defined under the statute, and a family member, I believe, is how it's, someone living, you know, within the same.
What about if, what if there are four brothers, would it be four times the capacity?
No, it's only limited to two.
Limited to two.
So you can double in in that situation, you know, spouse to spouse, or what, or, you know, family member, but that's as far as you can go.
Thanks.
All good questions.
Do you want to see if Anna has any questions?
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Anna, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it up, and then we'll be able to hear you, so give it once. Can you say something?
Hi, yeah, I found the presentation really informative, thank you very much, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
If you do want to comment, just raise your hand and we'll bring you back in.
Thanks.
You do, you have a member of the public in the back, Hillary's here, and then you have a couple of members online. It's not a public hearing, it's just a workshop, but did you want to take any questions or comments?
Sure, I mean, yeah, we usually.
Anybody wants to say anything?
Yeah.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, we tend to do that, so, yeah.
Hillary, do you have any comments you want to add? If you want to comment, we just ask that you go to the, anyone watching, the, can hear you, or she can use the one at the podium.
Good evening, I thought that was a very accurate presentation, I just wanted to fill in a couple of questions. There was a question about organic certification, it's not officially available as organic, but MAFKA does have a clean cannabis certification program that's modeled on organic standards. And then there was a question about edibles, and it's they can't be in the form of a human, animal, or fruit.
Fruit.
And that package that looked like Altoids would also probably not be allowed under the standards for appearing identical to another existing candy. It also can't be marketed as candy. And I'm working with two caregivers who are looking to have adult-use cultivation and manufacturing, and the manufacturing they're looking to do would be primarily edibles.
Could you tell us what your background and role is?
Yes, I'm a regulatory compliance consultant with Main Matters Research and Consulting, and I work with medical cannabis and some medical cannabis businesses, they're transitioning to adult use to help them with municipal and state compliance and licensing.
Thanks.
Thank you.
If there's anyone watching on Zoom that wants to comment for the planning board, you can raise your hand and we'll invite you over, just a reminder that there is a short delay, once we bring you in. Last call for anyone to raise their hand if they're attending on Zoom. All right, you don't have any hands raised on Zoom. Any other questions for Amy or Grady, or any just, you know, things you want to react to, or initial thoughts that you'd give us for?
This is very helpful, I mean, I just want to kind of go over this a little bit more before, you know, it's a lot, there's a lot.
There's a lot.
To think about, that's for sure.
I think it's great foundation for continued discussions. I thought it was interesting how the state is, you you pointed out how they treat heavily regulated liquor industry at the state level, and and this huge emphasis towards home rule of this heavily, heavily regulated industry, so it's very interesting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very, very informative, very helpful.
Glad we could be of help.
Yeah.
Good luck to you with your process. If we can be of assistance, you know, later on.
Yeah, I think.
If you come back, or if you have specific questions that you want to, you know, throw Caroline's way, you know, we can try to answer them.
Yeah, if you guys, you know, take this home and and read it, look it over, let it sink, and if you have questions, you know, just email me within the next week and we'll compile them. I will say, some additional clarity on the school would be helpful, I think, you know, one of the first things we can do is, once we get that clarified, get it on a map for you, so we can kind of see the.
Yeah, that would be.
The zones, or the areas of town that are really out of question.
Right, because I don't immediately knock out, you know, 30% of the the land base or whatever, and then you kind of go for that.
For the adult, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We could do a 500 and 1,000, so you guys can kind of see that as a starting point.
Yeah.
Great, well, thank you for having us.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm sure it's going to be a long, a long process, this, developing this, I'm sure the public will have plenty of.
Amy, do you have a, is this the same that you had emailed earlier today?
Yeah.
It is, isn't it?
Where there's one.
Or could you just email me a clean copy for the record, in case we get some public inquiries? That would be great, thank you. And so, just so you guys know, for next month, the council, as you know, tabled the shoreland zoning, we have been slowly working on pulling the shoreland zoning regulations out as a separate ordinance, we would then be presenting a separate shoreland ordinance, cleaning up whatever we need to clean up in the zoning ordinance, to strike it out of the zoning ordinance, and at the same time, some coastal wa, potential coastal waters amendments have been brought up regarding piers, docks, and wharfs, which although it's in the coastal waters ordinance, it's part of shoreland zoning, it used to be in the zoning ordinance, their fall, it falls under the purview of the planning board. So in the perfect world, we are trying to get those three things done at the same time, so you can have one meeting where we notify all 800 property owners to talk about those three things pertaining to the shoreline. The hope is that that could be done in April, that's pretty aggressive. Really, it is going to be the same language for the shoreline that you've already gone through, just in a different format, and then there'll be some cleanup to the zoning, which is why it will come back to you, so that's the thought for April, but if that's not done, we'll bring some mapping back to you for cannabis, so you can kind of start the thought process. Again, if you have questions, just email me.
Boy, there's going to be a lot of feedback for that.
How's, how's the visioning and RFP?
The RFP has not happened yet, the visioning is in a lull.
Yeah.
From our perspective, because the consultants are working hard on the work, so after we get this next shoreline stuff done, I'll be the RFP, we're just kind of waiting for the vision.
And we have that April 9.
Yeah, the April 9 will be the first rule, I hope you can all try to attend if you're around, you know, there's a lot of talk about the vision and how it's going to tie into the next comp plan, and then there might be some ideas, as you saw the boards that are still up in the hallway, there's a lot of ideas that could lead to changes in Freeport, and a lot of those could be regulatory changes that would fall under your purview. I think there's only going to be one open house, but if you can't make that, I mean, it's a Saturday in spring, so if it's a nice day, I'm sure the Mayners will be outside doing stuff, but.
April 9 is April 9.
Yeah, April 9, it's before school vacation, but if you can't do that, there'll be a couple presentations to the council, council workshops, you could always tune in on those, and I can give you all those dates as we get closer. Yeah, we did have a really good turnout, we had, I think it was like 70 people between Zoom and in-person for the kickoff, and then most of the workshop sessions, I think there was like eight, we had about 50 people.
That's.
On all the Zooms, and then we had about 50 people at the closing workshop.
Yeah.
And I think the other day, they made up to like 65 surveys on, you know, the boards that they have out here, so.
So with respect to cannabis, did the town council already definitively determine that there would be no stores?
Their directive to us was just as I read to you, they didn't want us to look at retail, they just wanted you to look at the manufacturing, processing.
But they haven't made a specific determination.
They, that's been the case, I think, for the, I mean, it's a different council now, I don't know how much holdover exactly, there's three counselors who are still, but it's been pretty consistent that the council, as a voting.
Entity.
Yeah, there would, they they do not have, I would say, a majority of the council does not support retail in town, and so I think right there, it's basically a non-starter.
Point right now.
Yeah.
Of course, that could change.
Right, yeah, it could, it could change, but.
And that's part of the reason that we did have that workshop with them, because they gave you direction, and then a few council seats did change, so it was, you know, at the workshop, we did talk about it with them. And then you also do have the opportunity, I think it's March 22, the council's going to have their annual workshop where you can go, usually chair and vice chair, but anyone can go for 15 or 20 minutes. So you do have that time slot, I think it's 7:30 reserved, but that might be a good time, Sam and Robert, if you want to just, you know, connect with them again before you really start digging in, be like, hey, this is what we learned, this is what we know, if you want to just get a little more clarity on anything, that would be.
That was the 22nd?
Yeah, Sam, is that the date that we had sent you? 22nd at 7:30, so 7:30 to 7:50 here, in-person, I don't know, are there any other things you guys wanted to talk about with them? They're work, they're having a workshop with the project review board this month, so I think they'll talk about regulations. The council did give directive, they want to find ways to streamline the project review and, you know, development permitting process, so Cecilia's been working hard on doing some comparisons to other municipalities to see, you know, what thresholds are there, so it's possible if you don't do shoreline, that we'll have some language to you on that next month as well.
Boy, we're doing a lot of heavy lifting here.
Yeah, that.
Your timing is is noted.
And swishes.
Yeah.
He'll be at the podium.
We'll be calling you to the podium.
Oh, my gosh, I know.
Sure, there's some good subs coming.
Yeah, we need, we need somebody who's been in town for a long time, I think, somebody with some, I mean.
It's crazy.
Everybody has a good perspective, I think, but.
Just mix it up, yeah.
How much it's changed.
Yeah. Yep.
All right, well, that's all you guys have for tonight. Aaron, thank you.
Can I delegate my meeting closing powers to you, Aaron, for the evening?
I don't even say that.
Yeah, do I hear a motion?
One last time.
Yeah, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Yeah, all in favor?
I think we moved the close of workshop.
I don't think so either, but just for, you know.
For last time's sake.
Thank you, guys.
Lots of you guys out in town, not here.
Are you going to be here this weekend?
Recording stuff.
Well, I'm live, and I've got a house for a week, so we're going to head up Thursday, yes.
It's going to be a little cold, but I think it's going to be a good weekend.
I hope so, cold needs fast.
That's right, get the cold wax on.
Aaron.
Caroline, this is a nice binder you put.